All right. Good evening. Welcome to the May 13th, 2025, meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. City Clerk, if you could please take the roll.
Builo?
Here.
Stevenson?
Here.
Nichols is approved absence. Excuse. Larson?
Here.
Spanbauer?
Here.
Flum?
Here.
Mughawar?
Here.
We have six present.
Leading us in the invocation this evening will be Councilmember Builo.
Thank you. We come together this evening to discuss the issues that confront our city. May we always seek the wisdom to do things that reflect our concern for the people whom we represent.
Thank you, Councilmember Builo. Tonight, we have students from Oshkosh North High School with us here to help lead us in the pledge. If you could join me up front.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
As I mentioned, we have students here from Oshkosh North to help us out this evening. I've got some certificates to say thank you, but first, thank you for being here tonight, helping lead us. If you wouldn't mind, give us your name, maybe what grade you are at Oshkosh North, and if you've got a favorite class or a favorite teacher you want to give a shout-out to. Here's your chance.
Hi, I'm Hannah Conrad. I'm a junior, and I think my favorite teacher is Mrs. Loughlin.
Hi, I'm Keyshawn Hibbler. I am also a junior, and mine has to be Ms. Prezinski.
Hi, my name's Veronica Fogelson, and my two favorite teachers are Mrs. Osler and Ms. Munich.
Again, thank you for being here tonight, helping lead us in the pledge. Tonight, we have a few proclamations. One was issued in advance. That's acknowledging Building Safety Month here in the City of Oshkosh. And then we have three others that I'll read through. We've got some folks here to accept those. First one is actually in regards to Celiac Disease Awareness Month here in the City of Oshkosh. Whereas, celiac disease is one of the world's most prevalent genetic autoimmune diseases affecting an estimated 3 million Americans, 70% to 80% of whom are undiagnosed. And whereas, celiac disease causes the body to attack its own small intestine, which can lead to many other devastating health conditions, including cancer. And whereas, celiac disease results in extraordinary economic and productivity costs to both public and private sectors from employees and student absenteeism, as well as repeated inconclusive visits to healthcare providers. And whereas, on average, it takes four years to be correctly diagnosed with the disease. And there is no medication for cure for celiac disease. The only treatment is lifelong strict gluten-free diet. And whereas, studies show that up to 50% of people on a gluten-free diet continue to experience symptoms and have intestinal damage, revealing the ineffectiveness of the gluten-free diet as a treatment. And whereas, the Celiac Disease Foundation is a national nonprofit organization dedicated to improving the quality of life and health of individuals with celiac disease by advancing government support for biomedical research to develop diagnostic tools, life-improving treatments, and a cure for celiac disease, and to raise public awareness of this serious disease. Now therefore, I, Matt Mugawar, Mayor of the City of Oshkosh, do hereby designate May 2025 as Celiac Disease Awareness Month within the City of Oshkosh, and encourage the residents of Oshkosh to increase their understanding and their awareness of celiac disease. We have one for Greater Oshkosh Economic Development Corporation as well. We've got representatives of GOEDC here with us tonight. This is in regards to their 10th anniversary coming up here. Whereas, the Greater Oshkosh Economic Development Corporation was established in 2015 with the essential purpose of preserving the health of existing companies, fostering a positive entrepreneurial environment, connecting companies to workforce and talent development resources, enhancing the business climate, and promoting the quality of life in the Greater Oshkosh area. And whereas, since its inception, GOEDC has become the community's first private-public nonprofit economic development corporation, launching with a comprehensive strategy and securing community-wide investment from broad-based stakeholders. And whereas, over the past decade, GOEDC has been instrumental in transforming the regional business and economic conditions of the area by working to increase business profitability, community investments, and standard of living in the Greater Oshkosh area. And whereas, the vision of GOEDC is to build upon the strong economic base of existing industries, diversify the economic base by encouraging new industries, and improving the regional quality of life, thereby enhancing the reputation and attractiveness of the Greater Oshkosh area and Winnebago County. Now therefore, I, Matt Mugawar, Mayor of the City of Oshkosh, do hereby designate May 14th, 2025, as Greater Oshkosh Economic Development Corporation Day in the City of Oshkosh, in celebration of their 10th anniversary. In celebrating this milestone, we commend and express our deepest gratitude to the Greater Oshkosh Economic Development Corporation for its enduring commitment to economic excellence and community investment. And tonight, we have Tricia, as well as other representatives of GOEDC here. If you want to come on up and... This is for you and Florence yours.
I just want to, again, thank the council and the city staff, as well as, you know, all of the private investors that we have in GOEDC for the effort that we put forward. This is really our organization's about making Oshkosh the best place to live, do business, all of those different things, from the economic development aspect. So we greatly appreciate all the support that we have. It is Economic Development Week this week as well, so we're excited to be celebrating in Economic Development Week, and we hope to be here for many, many more years to do more of this work. So, thank you.
Congratulations on the 10-year anniversary, and here's to many more.
Thank you.
And one final proclamation issued this evening. This is in regards to National Public Works Week here in the City of Oshkosh, and I think Public Works Director Robbie will be accepting this one for the public works staff. Whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital, are of vital importance to the sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the City of Oshkosh. And whereas, these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our residents. And whereas, it is in the public interest for the residents, civic leaders, and children in the City of Oshkosh to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas, the year 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association and Canadian Public Works Association. Now therefore, I, Matt Mugawar, Mayor of the City of Oshkosh, do hereby designate the week, May 18th through the 24th of 2025, as National Public Works Week in the City of Oshkosh, and urge all residents to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and advancing the quality of life for all. Florence yours, if you want to say anything.
Thank you, Mayor. It is with great honor that I'm here representing all public works professionals to receive this proclamation from you. The field of public works is one that touches every single one of us each and every day, whether you walked, rode a bike, got in your car today. It's the public works professionals that make that possible. It is so much more than just streets and sidewalks, though. You know, it is water treatment, wastewater, natural gas, electric, telecommunications, recycling garbage. There's so much more than just the things we think of on a daily basis with our streets and sidewalks. So working together every single day, your public works professionals are ready for any challenge, and we do work to improve our infrastructure and quality of life daily. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, James, and thank you to all of our public works staff for everything they do, day in and day out.
Thank you.
Next up, we'll move on to public statements to council. I have one individual, Michael Marks. Welcome. Come on up. Just a reminder, statements are limited to five minutes, must address items that aren't listed on the agenda tonight, and are limited to issues that have an impact in the City of Oshkosh and that we may address at a future meeting. If you require more time, just please let me know. Yeah?
Hi, my name is Mike Morris, and I'm a member of the Midnight Club at 7 Bay Street. I thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I'd like to speak on our opposition to the proposed sidewalks on Bay Street from Bay Shore to the south. I'm here now because we weren't aware of the sidewalks until after the accepting of the road improvement plan to Bay Street. The first photo that I have up there shows Bay Street south to the river. The sidewalk will be on the inside of the electric poles, as I'm guessing. They would greatly interfere with the apron and entrance to the gentleman's business on the corner. He has a shop where he works on his equipment for his business. Anytime that there would be people coming down the sidewalk on their bikes, jogging, walking, wearing their earbuds or their cellphones and not paying attention, he could basically back out of his garage and potentially hit somebody. So we figure this is a very dangerous situation. As the sidewalk continues towards our building, which is the next one down, towards our building, the pine tree and our antenna pole would have to be removed. The antenna pole is only two feet from our building to, except for the sidewalks. Our steps to enter our building and the overhang are now considered in the right-of-way of the new right-of-way of Bay Street and will infringe on the sidewalk, which will stop at the end of our steps. A part of our steps will be in the sidewalk area and could have potentially dangerous also situations for somebody, again, riding their bike, where the sidewalk actually doesn't go anywhere. It just ends at our steps. So, we'd sort of like to see that alleviated, plus we don't have a clear-cut clue as to who would be responsible if somebody would hit those steps or our air conditioning unit, which was on the side of our building. A cul-de-sac at the end would take part of our parking lot, which would take part of our parking lot and leave about 10 to 16 feet of green space to the water. Right now, people who drive down to the end turn around in our parking lot, and we have never complained to the city or the police department. We are in favor of the concrete road, curb, and gutter, which will help in the maintenance and ease of snowfall. The sidewalk on the east side of the road, the sidewalk on the east side of the road would end at the end of the ruined building here and a driveway which is behind the building, thus also creating a hazard as somebody backing in or coming out of that driveway would not have sightline of somebody walking close to the building that would be on that particular sideline. And that also stops at the end of this building. It doesn't continue on down towards the water of any sort. So in closing, Bone Street has a sidewalk on one side and a pier to Fish Off. Mill Street has sidewalks on both sides with boat parking and a launch and a dock. Bay Street, Bay Street has neither, and only pedestrian hazards I can see coming up in the future. So Bay Street has no destination for why you would want to even be down there, because there's just three businesses. Any possible new development of a property to the east of our property may someday want to buy the business on the corner and/or our building. The existing sidewalks would probably be changed or modified in the future, so I would like you, the city council, to please rescind the addition of sidewalks on Bay Street. Thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I'd please answer it if you can.
I don't see any questions at this time. Thank you very much, sir.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have no one else registered to speak under public statements. So we'll move...
Could I add something to that?
You can come up if you'll give us your name and address.
Yeah, yeah.
Hold on. If you'll wait till you get the microphone, so we can pick you up.
Yeah, Mike Shuttle in Amont 62 Broad Street, but I, that building he was showing there, where they, he was talking about how it might be a dangerous hazard because of the sidewalk being there, coming in and out of the building and stuff. The other thing about that is that little apron there is the only parking spot I have that the city lets me park that's on the property for that building. There's a pretty good-sized lot there, but they don't let you park on any of it unless you put in a parking lot that would probably run over $100,000 to put in. And so, if there's a car parked in front of the garage door of that building, the car's going to be blocking the sidewalk. So you would eliminate even that parking spot for me. And the other thing I wanted to ask about is I had heard, and I thought maybe you guys could confirm it today, is that after they put the sidewalks and curbs and gutters in there, I heard that they're planning on putting no parking up on both sides of that street, which the metal Quonset Hut building that you saw in one of those pictures, they need parking there for when they drop off boats, because the storage unit there, storage building, and I parked trucks there in non-snowfalling season. So during the months that they don't snowfall, it's legal for me to park there, and that would mess me up for that, because anytime I'm trying to do any work over there or anything, I won't have any place to park anything. So if they put up no parking like that, can you tell me if they were planning on doing that, putting up the no parking on both sides of that street?
I can't answer that tonight, but if...
I would have to get with Engineering Division Manager and Transportation Director Collins to talk that over. To my knowledge, nothing has gone to the Transportation Committee to discuss that at this point in time.
Yeah, like a couple people have told me that. I don't know where they got their information from, but if you have a future meeting on this, you know, that'd be something that could be addressed or talked about, so we know, you know?
Sure.
So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And if the sidewalk goes in, you know, I'm against the sidewalk going in too, but at least now I can park in something in front of that garage door if I need to. If the sidewalk goes in, I won't be able to at all. There won't be any parking there, you know, for anything I do, it's going to mess me up pretty good, so, all right?
Okay. Thank you very much. Before we move on to consent, I just want to make sure I give a little clarity in terms of our process. We're governed by state statutes that says we can't interact on this topic, or we can't interact on this very much, because it wasn't an agenda item tonight. So just want to make sure that you know that we're not just ignoring you. This council does a pretty good job of listening to its speakers and the citizens, and I can guarantee somebody's going to be reaching out to public work staff to learn a bit more, and we have access to your contact information, so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Then we'll move on to consent agenda. I have no one registered to speak on anything consent-related, so I'll take a motion in a second, please.
So moved. Second.
I think Councilmember Builo wants to remove a couple things. Florence yours.
Yes, please. Can I please remove number 10 and 11 for separate votes?
Absolutely. Any discussion on any of the other items, or any other items that council wants to remove? If not, City Clerk, if you'll take the roll on consent, minus Resolution 25-216 and 25-217.
Builo?
Hi.
Aye.
Nichols?
Fifty-fifty.
I'm sorry, he's not here. Larson?
Aye.
Spanbauer?
Aye.
Flum?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried six.
We'll come to Resolution 25-216. This is to approve special area design review and architectural building plan review for new restroom waiting area building and bus platform at 110 Pearl Avenue, 222 Pearl Avenue, and property located on the south side of the 100 block of High Avenue. Plan Commission recommends approval. I'll take a motion in a second, please.
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
Yep. I have no issue with this, but 222 Pearl is the previous office of the Grand Oshkosh, my employer, and this project is the reason why we have a new office, so I'll be abstaining.
Okay. I see nothing else. If you'll take the roll on 25-216.
Builo?
Present.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Spanbauer?
Aye.
Flum?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried five-one, present.
Resolution 25-217, approve conditional use permit request for transit center expansion at 110 Pearl Avenue, 222 Pearl Avenue, and property located on the south side of 100 block of High Avenue. Plan Commission recommends approval. Take a motion in a second, please.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? I see none. If you'll take the roll on 25-217.
Builo?
Present.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Spanbauer?
Aye.
Flum?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried five-one, present.
Moving to pending ordinances, we have, I believe, we have five pending ordinances. These are all the second readings, so we'll be taking these up one by one for action. Ordinance 25-238, amend parking lot maps and associated regulations within Appendix 27B of the Municipal Code for the 300 East Lot and 300 West Lot. Transportation Committee recommends approval.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Please take the roll.
Builo?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Spanbauer?
Aye.
Flum?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried six.
Ordinance 25-239, amend sections 27A-8 and 27A-10 of the Municipal Code regarding yield, right-of-way intersections, and through-street designated at the intersection of Nevada Avenue and Oak Street. Oak Street will stop for Nevada Avenue. Transportation Committee recommends approval.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Please take the roll.
Builo?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Spanbauer?
Aye.
Flum?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried six.
Ordinance 25-240, amend section 27A-11 of the Municipal Code pertaining to parking and loading zone regulations on Central Street and Winnebago Avenue. Transportation Committee recommends approval.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Please take the roll on 25-240.
Builo?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Spanbauer?
Aye.
Flum?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried six.
Ordinance 25-241, approve zone change from suburban mixed-use district and single-family residential nine district to single-family residential five for properties east of Farmington Avenue and Christian Drive. Plan Commission recommends approval.
So moved. Second.
Discussion on these. Please take the roll.
Builo?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Spanbauer?
Aye.
Flum?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried six.
Moving right along. Ordinance 25-242, approve zone change from institutional district to central mixed-use district at 110 Pearl Avenue and property located on the south side of the 100 block of High Avenue. Plan Commission recommends approval. Take a motion in a second, please. Approve? Discussion.
I'll be abstaining for the same reason as previous.
Okay. Any other discussion? If you'll call the roll on 25-242.
Could I recall who motioned and who's second?
Second.
Thank you. Builo?
Present.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Spanbauer?
Aye.
Flum?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried six. I'm sorry, five-one, present.
There you go. We have two new ordinances. These are the first reading, no anticipated action this evening. Ordinance 25-243, approve amending section 27A, section 10.2 of the Municipal Code pertaining to pedestrian malls within the City of Oshkosh. Plan Commission recommends approval of that. And ordinance 25-244, amend section 4-6 of the City of Oshkosh Municipal Code pertaining to alcohol beverages required use of license. Again, both of those are first readings, and I'll come back at the next regularly scheduled council meeting for action. Councilmember Larson.
One quick question on this, and I don't know if you can answer it or not. I should have asked you in advance, too. On 244, I think this is great. I think it's very well-written. I'm very thankful we're going to address it in the manner we are. Is there any reason, this is liquor license renewal season right now. Everybody's doing it. This will be beneficial to all of the city when we get there, because this means that a limited asset can come back to us if it's not being utilized correctly.
Correct.
We know that there are probably some licenses that are currently issued that are not being used correctly right this second. There was a letter that went out to renewal saying, "We'd like you to meet with the deputy clerk to discuss whether you're using the right license or not."
Yep.
Chapter four of the city says that that's a requirement, but it was listed differently in the letter than in the change in the chapter, which is great. My question to council, and I guess to you, is there any reason that we'd want to do this sooner than in two weeks? Because it will save us the effort, in theory, of issuing a license that's not being used correctly if those folks know that there's a new mechanism to get the license back if it's not being used. And if we're a quarter of the way done, then it doesn't matter. If we're three-quarters of the way done, it doesn't matter, but you get what I'm saying. There might be a reason to do this in advance, because it will be very valuable when we do it.
Exactly. We are pretty much at least three-quarters of the way done. The majority of them have come back renewals, and we did meet with a lot of the combinations. So they are aware.
Perfect.
And I could send you guys a follow-up, a summary of how the renewal process is going.
Great. Then I have no reason to call for it to be tonight unless everybody else is anxious about it like I am, but I'm happy to wait two weeks, because there won't be that much of a benefit for now. But it'll be great when we do it, because then we can have the discussion with folks who we've issued licenses to that aren't using them, and then have more to issue, which is good. So I appreciate staff writing it in this manner also, and the workshop we did led to this, so it's all great.
All right. There's nothing else on ordinance 25-244. We'll move on to pending resolution. We have two of them. One, Resolution 25-245, approve issuance of combination Class B beer liquor license for the Golden Nest Pancake Cafe. I'll take a motion in a second.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Larson.
It's always me with the liquor ones, I'm sorry. I am all for this. I hope we can do this tonight. I have, I knew last meeting we made some changes to the way that council does this, and we're going to, not conditionally approve this, but we're going to issue the license based on the requirements being met, and there's an end date for it. I am concerned with the chart that comes with this in the resolution that says items have been completed, because as I understand it, those items need to be completed in order for us to take this action. I'll take clarification on that from staff in a minute. I know that health was on both of these listed as pending date of review for today. We got a letter, I think everybody saw it at this point, saying that health was there. They foresee no issues, but they're not finally inspected yet. So that final inspection has not occurred. I'm not sure, because I can't find it, that final fire inspection hasn't occurred either, but this chart says that it's completed. So I have uncertainties on my yes vote going for this with the chart included in it. I don't know that all that makes sense. I'll look for staff for clarification, and before I make a motion to amend the resolution, I guess, or I, maybe it would be good to know if fire is here, if we are truly through a formal and final fire inspection. We know that health isn't done because the health department said it is not done. And again, the last meeting, we all voted that we can make this vote and issue this license, and these things can follow. So I'm 100% on board with this license being a yes. I'm just not okay with my vote being yes indicating something in a resolution that may not be totally done yet. Does that make sense? I see you standing up.
For fire, our fire marshal's at your office.
I'm going to invite you up to the microphone for the first time, chief.
Our fire marshal's actually on vacation this week, so as soon as he gets back on Monday, I'll touch base and see if he's completed the final inspection or not yet.
Okay.
I'll have him get on that as soon as we're able to.
That's great. So we don't know, in other words?
I'm not sure.
Yeah. The information that we have in our system, what we use to process licenses, has been marked by that fire marshal. So I'm not sure exactly what he's done and what your thinking needs to be done, so I'm not sure.
I just need to know, again, I think the actions we took as council to say that we can issue this license with these things being met when they're met is fantastic. I'm not sure, I know for sure that health isn't done because the health department said it's not done.
Right.
So I don't know if that means we can vote yes on this with health saying no, and I don't know that we can vote yes on item with a formal resolution with a chart that says an item is complete if the fire department doesn't know it's complete or not. I'm just not, I'm comfortable voting yes, I want to vote yes, but I don't know procedurally how I can do that without the information being presented to us. City Attorney, were you weighing in?
I understand.
Waiting to be called.
Go right ahead.
That was you being called on.
If you would like to remove the chart, I understand the concerns. I think that maybe an amendment to remove the chart and add language to where it says under the be it further resolved conditions to be completed by June 2nd, 2025, change that to all required inspections and approvals to be completed by June 2nd, 2025.
I have a question on that. So when we went through this whole process, what I picked up was we cannot issue conditional licenses. But that language, to me, is conditional.
You are.
And I'm not an attorney, thankfully, but.
You are granting it, it's going to be issued, you are saying you want, that there are certain things you want to be completed, and this goes back to the ordinance also that's being presented, that you want those things taken care of by a date, whether it's June 2nd, whether you change that date, whatever it is. And then if the license is not being used by that day, then staff would come back to you and say, under that ordinance, it's not being used as required by our ordinance.
And then we would take it back at that point?
Yes.
You would have the potential to take it back, you would hold a hearing, and you would, at that time, hear, you know, their arguments or what, you know, whatever they have to tell you, and you would have that.
So by all intents and purposes, it's approved tonight, and then we have the option to take it back if they have not met these obligations. That's how it's not conditional, essentially, right?
It is actually approved tonight, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
We just, there's an added valve for recourse in case it's not being utilized correctly by that point in time, if I understand that correctly. Which there always was anyway, because that's in chapter 125, that's in our chapter four, that exists no matter what as law and as fact. We're just trying to not conditionally approve things, which is fine. So my point is, this is all great, I'm just not comfortable voting yes on something that says complete when it's not. Rebecca, I interrupted you, I'm sorry.
I didn't get called yet.
You moved your mic, you've been called.
I think using the word, we're using conditions in two different ways. If you replace conditions with requirements to be completed by June 2nd, that makes more sense, and it doesn't get mixed up with the other way we're using, or we used conditional approval. So I think what Lynn was trying to say would alleviate your concern, because.
And you can actually place conditions on an approval, but you cannot conditionally approve it and tell the clerk to say, to just issue it when the conditions are met. That's the distinction, is we were holding licenses, and when the conditions were met, the clerk was issuing it. Once it's granted by you, it is issued. You actually can put a condition on a license.
Which, to reiterate from the last time, from my experience doing this, because maybe everybody has a liquor license up here, but I have a couple, and I might be the only one, that is massively beneficial to do it in that manner, because then you can get ahead, start doing all the things you need to do as a business. So we've done this completely correctly, as far as I'm concerned, and avoided the legal pitfalls of not issuing things in a conditional manner. That's all great. My only concern is that we are being presented with data that says something is done and is not done yet. So I'm not comfortable with the way that we're making a resolution. So you're hearing me get to an amendment at some point in time, but I would rather see these resolutions come to us without the chart of completion formally noted in them, because we don't need to know, we've already done that work.
Councilmember Flom?
I'm going to move to remove the chart and then insert language at the be it further resolved to reflect that these conditions are required to be met by June 2nd, 2025.
Requirements, the conditions?
That the reviews are required to be met and completed by 2025. If anybody has anything they'd like to tweak with that?
I think what.
Hold on, hold on.
First, we'd get a second to get it discussed.
Second.
Thank you. I just want to clarify, the way that that was just worded, is that in alignment with what you had suggested a few moments earlier?
I believe so. I didn't write it down, but. Personally, I just think if we use a different word.
That's fine.
It would be much more helpful for everyone. So if we say requirements.
All requirements to be completed.
All requirements to be completed by.
You know, all requirements for issuance of the license to be completed by June 2nd.
Not for issuance, because we're issuing.
We're issuing it upon approval, they just have to be completed by that point in time.
By that date.
Yeah, by that date. If anybody else has anything else they'd like to add to it, I'm more than open to it.
I hope not. Any discussions on the motion to amend? It does clean it up a bit.
Yep.
I see no comments on the motion to amend. City clerk, if you'll take the role on the motion to amend.
On 25.
245.
245?
Yep.
To amend. And that, I'm sorry, was Flom and Larson?
Yep.
Second? Builo?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Spanbauer?
Aye.
Flom?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried six?
We have a motion as amended on the floor still. Any further discussion? I see none. Please take the role on 25-245 as amended.
Builo?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Spanbauer?
Aye.
Flom?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried six?
Next resolution's probably going to be similar. Resolution 25-246, approve conditional surrender of combination class B beer liquor license and issuance of combination class B beer liquor license. This is from Mile High Pub to the 1890 Pub and Bistro.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Councilmember Flom?
I'm going to move to, again, same thing as last time, strike the chart and add in that same language onto the be it further resolved.
Second.
Any, any discussion on the motion to amend? I see none. If you'll take the role on the amendment to 25-246.
That would be Builo?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Spanbauer?
Aye.
Flom?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried six?
So we have the motion as amended on the floor. Any further discussion? Please take the role on 25-246 as amended.
Builo?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Spanbauer?
Aye.
Flom?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried six?
We have one final resolution this evening. Resolution 25-247, approve offer to purchase of Southwest Industrial Parkland from Leeco Steel LLC in the amount of $249,776.80. So I'll take a motion in a second, please.
So moved.
Second. We have a few representatives, I think, of Leeco and the project here. We have Chad Shu and Denton Nordhughes?
Nordhughes.
There we go.
Welcome? Yes, thank you.
Floor is yours, you go right ahead if you'd like.
Well, we'd like to start by thanking all of you for having us here, the council, city staff, and having the opportunity to plead our case, and try to get this through the program, and so. So we, we came here, I should start by, I'm Chad Shu, now the project manager for Leeco Steel, I used to be the vice president, I partially retired, and Denton's got me back again working on some projects. He is the president and CEO of Leeco Steel. So back in 2006, we came here, built the new facility, 75,000 square feet of the industrial, South Industrial Park, and it was great. Everything went fabulous. You know, back then, working with all the city staff, local contractors, back then with Chanco, it was fantastic. Everybody was great, and it went really well. And so here we are today, and the same thing has happened. Everybody that I've talked to, I've talked to a lot of people, and it's going very well with the city staff and economic group, everyone. It's been real nice, and we really appreciate you guys having us here and listening to us. Yeah, I would just like to say thank you as well for the intact council. As Chad mentioned, this has been a great relationship we've had in Oshkosh the last 20 years. This was actually our first greenfield site that we built of many across North America, and we're looking very much forward to trying to expand that and continue to grow in the Oshkosh community. We've enjoyed every single aspect of the people here, the, just the environment, it's been a wonderful experience, so looking forward to your approval, and so we can start Phase One, our, on a two-phase project that will expand the facility and the rail line. Initially, it'll be the rail line moving to the east and the facility to the west, and then next will be Phase Two, with the east facility expansion as well, so that's all I have, thank you.
Any questions from council?
We're open to questions.
Well, it's always good when existing businesses in the community want to stay, want to expand, want to grow, and we're excited for that. When we heard of it, we were excited and absolutely, you know, supportive of the efforts, and excited to see what the next project will do for you guys and keep you here right in Oshkosh, so.
Did you guys get the last handouts that I dropped off earlier?
Yep. Yes.
So it was the first rendition I got, you know, some new actual drawings of what it might look like. Hopefully that was helpful, see what's going on, where we're at.
I had Councilmember Builo, and then Deputy Mayor.
I think I saw some initial things when we were in a workshop, but how many additional jobs in FDUs are you guys anticipating with being able to do with this expansion?
Yeah, in the first phase, easiest to predict it would be in 2026 when the facility is built, we're probably looking at about 200 high-paying jobs, and obviously with Phase Two, we have.
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I likewise just wanted to thank you guys for your commitment to Oshkosh. I mean, initially, your investment in the city, and then now your subsequent expansion. It's always good to see when businesses are healthy, growing. Manufacturing is the lifeblood of our community, so, I mean, I'd really like to see when we keep that industrial base here and at home, so thank you again.
Councilmember Flom?
Same thing here, just want to thank you for your commitment to this town, employing people who live here, work here, and play here, and I appreciate you providing these. It's been great to see what the project will entail and the people you're going to hire and add to your team, so thank you very much.
If there's nothing else, council? City clerk, if you'll take the role on 25-247?
Builo?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Spanbauer?
Aye.
Flom?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried six?
Well, congratulations on the future expansion. I drive by there daily, I'll be watching it as it progresses.
Fantastic, thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes the action items for the evening. Now we move on to council discussion, direction to city manager, and future agenda items. Discussion and direction to city manager, I think the only thing, from earlier in the evening, the gentleman, the two gentlemen regarding Bay Street and that construction, obviously, it's a 2025 project, I don't know, I know that means we're pretty far along, but if, maybe if Director Robbie could provide council with some update, you know, via email, a memo or something like that, just letting us know, and if you have the ability to reach out to some of those property owners to, to see, so.
Yeah, I'll get with our staff and transportation department staff, and we'll get some more information to you.
Thank you. I know it's a unique area over there, we've done some unique things in the past in some of the construction, and appreciate you taking a second dive into it.
Yeah, we'll take a look at it and get back to you, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion or direction to city manager on anything? Thank you. Any other discussion or direction to city manager on anything? Okay, future agenda items. We've got a couple. Future, excuse me, meetings and workshops, really. Intergovernmental meeting with council and state legislators, that's Monday, May 19. That's coming Monday, 5:00 PM in here. We've got several of the state legislators confirmed for attendance, and I believe an agenda was posted this afternoon for everyone's review. Workshop on city policy for replacing streetlights and utility poles owned by WPS, that's May 27 at 5:00 PM. I mentioned to Ms. Grill, I really was hoping that this topic wouldn't see an agenda for a while, but...
Why are you looking at me? I don't know why you're looking at me.
But we're having a workshop on May 27 at 5:00 PM. Neither did I, and I don't know what it's about yet. So I just saw, I saw the topic and...
We're going to find out.
We'll find out. We have a workshop on facility assessment study, June 10, 2025, at 5:00 PM as well. Now, that's before a council meeting. That only gives us 45 minutes. So standard rules apply. Try to provide as much information in advance for us to digest and give us time to provide commentary, please.
Do I have to bring cake, or do you guys have to bring cake for me? Because that's my birthday.
Oh. I believe that's your requirement, yes. And a workshop tie core TIF request, that'll be June 24, 2025, at 5:00 PM as well.
Just a question, wouldn't TIF requests typically be a closed session, or is it a different kind of thing?
Generally, we have them provide a presentation before we do a TIF...
The development agreement would be the closed session.
Before we do a TIF. So that way, we have a better understanding, and it's publicly, some information that they can provide.
Perfect.
Before we go to close. Any other future agenda items or meetings or workshops anybody wants to chat about? Good. Councilmember Announcements and Statements, Mr. Floem?
I just want to give a shout out to an individual in this community who recently donated 30 American flags for the downtown area. It's in honor of the Leach family, Fred and Terry Leach. This is anonymous donation, so I'm going to leave this person's name out of it, but I just want to thank that person for donating these flags and for what the Leach family has done for this community.
Very nice. Any other announcements or statements? I see none. City Manager, the rest is yours.
For item 44, it's a PSA for invoice cloud. This will allow online, web, mobile, automatic payment and wireless purchases, or payments for utility payments. We'll be having more information for you at a later time, but this is just the approval of that. So letting you know that'll be coming. The next two items are somewhat self-explanatory. Number 47 is an update from the library board. I don't know if there's any questions. We could provide further information on that. And then Ramble Final Report, there'll be a further discussion at a future meeting.
Yes, if I could just step in, the report from this investigation was attached to this agenda item tonight. Memo from Engineering Division Manager Girock talked about a couple of potential next steps, and we'll be, we wanted to give you a little more time to look at the report, read it, ask us any questions that you may have, and then put this on the next agenda for direction to staff for which way to go. But we just wanted to give you a little more time, since this was the first time you were seeing the report, to give you some time to read through it and digest it before we asked for direction.
Appreciate that a lot.
And then item 49, there was a workshop a few weeks ago on this?
Yes, that was the fifth Tuesday in April, so that would have been two weeks ago, a workshop regarding the, some updates that we're looking at from the numeric standards for water quality, in particular, in our stormwater management code. That workshop was recorded by Oshkosh Media and is available on their YouTube channel for viewing. As staff, we will be going to the Sustainability Advisory Board and the Plan Commission to get recommendations from them, to then present to the council to get your final approval on moving forward. So that is the next step, is we'll be meeting with those two committees. We are scheduled for back-to-back the beginning of June. So SAB is the first Monday, and then the following day with Plan Commission, we'll be having discussions. And we'll be getting them all the information, because we're not going to do the same two-hour presentation. We'll be giving them the link and letting them watch it in advance and getting them as much information as we can so we can target our discussion with each of those boards to really focus on getting a recommendation for council.
Sorry, I clicked on the link.
It works.
It works.
No, and I appreciate you guys going to Sustainability and Plan Commission with that, and that's good for them to give us their recommendation before we start chipping away at it.
And then the State of the City video will be released tomorrow. I don't know what time, so, but I'm sure we'll have some announcements. Then just want to highlight that Assistant City Manager John Fitzpatrick and Oshkosh Media were honored at a media fest. John's hiding in the back in the dark. I don't know. But they received the Award of Excellence, and John received the Friends of Public Access for 25 years of support for Oshkosh Media. And the next item is just to remind people to contact the legislators regarding the municipal service payments program. We had a news release a few weeks ago, but basically, this equalizes what the taxpayers in Oshkosh have to pay for the state buildings that are located here. And their time is of the essence because they're putting the budget together at this time. And we have a national community survey out right now. People might have received postcards in the mail. We will be opening that up to the city completely on May 16. It'll be open till the 30th. And that's all I had.
All right. Any questions from council on any of those or any of the outstanding issues? Mr. Floem?
Just want to say, a number of us have been talking, actually, all of us have been talking about MSP payments. A number of us have been talking about it in the media. I just want to highlight that and keep pushing on that. We've done a fantastic job with discussing it, bringing it to light, educating people about it. So the more the merrier. I've been in touch with several of our legislators, and that should continue as we go forward. And thank you for your efforts as well on the city manager. I appreciate it.
It'll be a topic for Monday with our discussion with them, but piggybacking off of Councilmember Floem, I do want to, I want to thank council members as well as staff. Through your use of social media, the reach has been far, and that doesn't always occur. And to have seen the response that people have had, it's really positive. It's encouraging, and keep it up. We have a, City Manager mentioned we have a short window of time to elicit some change and get a positive result for not only Oshkosh, but hundreds of communities across the state. So hopefully, the state will do what's right, but keep up the good work and keep up the pressure on getting people to reach out to their legislators. If there's nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.